..............................................................................
.............................................
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We actually have fourteen items listed, although several of them are related. Item A is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are set forth on the agenda. Items B and C on behalf of the city are related to items I, J, K, and L on behalf of the airport authority. That is all pending litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The case name, case numbers, and parties to the litigation are all set forth under those agenda items. Item D is public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 5495-7B and the position title of city manager. Item E and item F are real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. The parcel numbers and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda, and this is for the city council consideration. Item G is related to item M and G on behalf of the city council, item M on behalf of the airport authority. Existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1, and the litigation title and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item H is initiation, or sorry, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6D4 when potential case is involved. Item A, sorry, item N, lastly, is real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. And again, the properties and the parties, negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the regular six o'clock session.
Thank you. We will now recess to our closed session, and a regular session will convene at six p.m. Thank you for your patience. Our closed session went over just a little bit. It is now six oh five. And I call to order the meeting of the city council of the city of Victorville, and the city council seating as the library board of trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city's housing asset successor. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gomez.
Good evening.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Negretti.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
May we have closed session announcements by our city attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had fourteen items on the agenda, several of which are related. Items, item A was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D2, and the facts and circumstances related to that are on the agenda. Items B, C on behalf of the city council, I, J, K, and L were all pending litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. Parties to that litigation and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Item D was public employee performance evaluation pursuant to government code 5495-7B, position title city manager. Items E and F were real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. The property APNs and negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. Item H was anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9. One case was involved. Item M, and I have to go back to item M and... Item G were related. They are also existing litigation pursuant to government code 5495-6.9D1. The cases, names, and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Lastly, item N was real property negotiations pursuant to government code 5495-6.8. Those properties are set forth on the agenda, as are the negotiating parties. The record should reflect that councilmember Negretti recused himself from the discussion on item N because he is a contract employee of the United States government. There is one reportable action, and that is with respect to item H, anticipated litigation. The council, on a unanimous vote of all members, agreed to participate in a PUC proceeding, which is an SEC rate case, and they authorized the filing of a notice to participate in that action. That is all there is in terms of reportable action at this time.
Thank you. We will now have the pledge of allegiance and the invocation, so let's see. Invitation will be delivered by Pastor Dane Davis from First Christian Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Before sharing that invocation, I thought it was an opportune time to share a quick word of encouragement. I know that as a city council here in Victorville, you come under a lot of fire. You undergo a lot of criticism. A lot of people think that the city of Victorville is in shambles. Hopefully, not as many as they used to. But wanted to share an encouraging passage from one of the most depressing books of the Bible, Lamentations. And as Jeremiah wrote that book, he looked out on a city that was literally in shambles. The enemies had come in and knocked the city walls down. Their temple had been destroyed. Most of the people had been killed. And as he looked on this city that had been destroyed, and God gave him this encouragement, in Lamentations 3, he wrote, "Because of the Lord's great love, we are not consumed; for his compassion never fail. They are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness. I say to myself, 'The Lord is my portion; therefore, I will wait for him.'" The job that you do is oftentimes thankless, and I, for one, am very grateful and thankful for this city council that serves this city so well. God bless you in your work. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you that when we do undergo times of criticism and attack, that we can turn to this simple truth that you revealed to Jeremiah over twenty-five hundred years ago, that your love is sufficient for us, that your mercies are new every morning, that your compassions never fail. And Lord, I just pray that you would give this council wisdom as decisions are made tonight. Lord, when the timing is right, I pray that you would give them unity with the decisions that are made, and we pray those decisions would be in line with your will. And Lord, when the timing is not right, I pray that you would give them the wisdom to wait on the right timing to make that decision. Lord, I just thank you for each of these five council members. We thank you for Doug Robertson, our city manager, and each of these city representatives who are serving us so well, oh God. We pray that you would give them strength and perseverance, and once again, great wisdom and unity, and it's in Christ's name I pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we do not have any proclamations or special presentations. Madam clerk, please present agenda to the council and any provisions to the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the written communications or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council, and there are two revisions to tonight's agenda that have been provided on the dais for the council and to the public. The first one is a revision to item number D5, and that is a contract and a map for the item Water Improvement Program Projects with Civil Tech, Inc. And the next one is a revision to item number D6, contract and a map for the Water Improvement Program Projects with Web, Inc. And those are all the revisions I have. Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. We also do not have appeal hearings this evening, therefore, we move on to public hearings. Item B1, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the request to vacate portions of unnamed unimproved streets that are needed for public use. Madam clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero four three to vacate abandoned portions of street right-of-way offers of dedication per instrument recorded in Book 3039, page 588, Book 3049, page 521, and as document number ninety-three dash two-two-seven four-five-four of official records and on parcel map number three-four-zero-four.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards from anyone that's requesting to speak. So I close the public hearing. Are there any questions, comments from council members?
Yes, I have, I have a concern that I wanted maybe staff to clarify for the audience, because this was my perception.
Are you requesting to speak?
I am.
You can go ahead.
Yeah, I've started. One of the concerns was we have unnamed streets, and it was my understanding as just a regular citizen, not as a council member, that perhaps there was some kind of value to these unnamed streets. And if there was value, were we going to get some kind of compensation? And because that was my understanding, I'd like to have clarity also for the audience.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I might, I can maybe describe the process a little bit to explain that this type of property is different than traditional real estate. In this particular case, this is involving an offer of dedication, and it's called an offer of dedication specifically on a parcel map that creates a subdivision of property. And the Subdivision Map Act does identify that requirement for public right-of-way purposes, in large part to ensure that properties aren't landlocked. If, in fact, it's determined that that right-of-way is not necessary, as is the case here, Subdivision Map Act, my understanding also is that that property has to revert back to the original grantee or the offer, person or the entity that made the offer of the property. So it's not something that can particularly be sold by a city or a public entity. In this particular case, we're looking at property that is dirt road. The offer is in place pursuant to our municipal code. The offer of dedication does not become owned until accepted by the city. The city won't accept the public road until it's actually improved to city standards, meaning roads, curbs, gutters have actually been constructed to our standards. So this particular case, a little bit different than a traditional commercial residential or industrial piece of property that we might own throughout the city. Roads, public right-of-ways are differently and do revert, in fact, back to the person that offered it if there's a vacation.
Thank you.
For the question, I move approval of resolution, I move approval of resolution number seventeen point oh four three.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a general plan amendment from low-density residential to commercial, and a zone change from R1, single-family residential, to PUD, planned unit development, and seventeen point eighteen vacant acres with a negative declaration. Madam clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council approve the project by taking the following actions: Adopt a negative declaration for the project pursuant to Section 1504 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero four four approving the general plan amendment, and introduce ordinance number twenty-three seventy approving the zone change.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards from anyone that wants to speak. So I close the public hearing. Are there any comments from council members or questions?
Move approval of the recommendation as stated.
Would that motion also include way further reading of ordinance twenty-three seventy?
I need to read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Victorville adopting the zone change portion of case number PLN seventeen dash zero 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 six, a zone change from R1, single-family residential, to PUD, planned unit development on seventeen point two eight vacant acres with a negative declaration on property located east of Cantina Street and the Crossroads Shopping Center and north of Palmdale Road.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the annual assessments for unpaid rubbish collection, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees. Madam clerk, please read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero two nine confirming the annual assessments for unpaid rubbish collection fees, sewer use fees, storm drain fees, hazardous waste fees, and Assembly Bill 939 recycling fees at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have one card. Okay, the person is Jeanne Claude Peck.
Chair, you have to come down with the microphone here in front, please. Thank you.
My name is Jean Claude Peck, a French name. I'm French. And I serve in the US Army. And my problem is I left somebody in my home, Brown Street, since 2010, and she hasn't paid me the rent, one thousand dollars. So she owed me about ninety-six thousand dollars, okay? And I told her, "At least pay the utility, the water, electricity, and things like that." And she haven't done that. So I'm a man of God, okay? I give her a chance, but I don't know how far I have to go, because I'm not working anymore. So I might have to evict her, but I don't know exactly what to do. I have to pay about that. So I don't know. Well, I received a letter from you saying that I have to pay, but I don't think I should pay the water and things like that. She's still in the house. And she has a son, she have a son for my son. That's why, you know, she's kind of family. I don't know what to do.
Yeah, we should have someone speak with him.
Yeah, we can certainly speak with you after the meeting or later, but just generally speaking, the homeowner is responsible for unpaid bills of tenants, unfortunately. That's per city ordinance, because the other, you know, hundred and thirty thousand or so residents of Victorville shouldn't be responsible for a tenant who hasn't paid. So ultimately, that's why it's, it is proposed to be put on a lien on your property. It would become part of your property tax bill for next year. But certainly, we can discuss with you, have our staff discuss with you any options that we may know of that could help you out. But ultimately, this is an unpaid bill that reverts to the property owner in question, which would be you.
I do have his address and telephone number.
Great.
I, about two years ago, let me see. I came here, you know, and I paid for, I paid for her, you know, that was twenty, about a year ago, twenty sixteen, May twenty sixteen. And I tried to put the bill on her name, and didn't do that.
Right. You can put the bill in her name, but ultimately, if she doesn't pay, you're still responsible as the property owner.
Okay, I see. Right, so you said you want to, you want me to wait, so we'll talk about that later on, or what?
Well, we have your information. We can contact you tomorrow to discuss kind of what the process is and offer any advice that we may have.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I can leave?
Yes, you can go now.
Thank you, and you, God bless you.
Thank you.
That was the only card that I had. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Are there any comments from council members?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This would be the same question on the next public hearing, so I won't ask it twice. But in going through the proposed liens, I noticed that there are examples of more than one lien for the same lot with the same owner, but two different amounts. Are they added together when it's filed with the county? Or do we file two different liens with two different amounts, although it's the same property at the same address with the same property owner?
I'll let Deputy City Manager George Harris answer.
Excuse me, Mayor. Yes, so Mayor Protem, any assessments that accrue to the same parcel number will be added together and shown as one.
I thought so, but since they are listed here, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, we have them listed separately, and there's two items, simply because the water district is a separate legal entity. So some of these are city fees, some of these are water district fees.
Madam Mayor, I had a little different question. I noticed a lot of the names on the two lists are the same. And the properties seem to be the same. I almost got the impression that somebody maybe abandoned the property and didn't pay any of their...
That, that could be, but we have a combined bill, so if they simply haven't paid, then it would appear on this. I think it's rare, if not ever, that we have somebody that pays the water portion but not the sanitation portion or vice versa.
What collection effort do we go through before they come to a lien?
George, you have details on that?
Yeah, so, so the easiest way, actually, the... Yeah, so, so the easiest way, actually, the most effective way is to use the property tax in the lien process before you send it to collections.
Can you get closer to the mic? We're not hearing.
Sorry, that was a... So this becomes, the property tax process does become the most effective method to use, and an assessment is done at the end of the year. Whoever is delinquent after that point goes, they go directly to the property tax bill.
These property tax assessments?
Yes, so, it's both. So in essence, you, you'll place a charge on the property tax bill, but if, and you would simultaneously place a lien, so if there's a change in ownership on the property before they actually pay their property tax bill in December, the lien will stay and escrow will actually capture it and accrue it back to the old owner. And so, it's a dual process that cities have been using for many, many years.
One else?
I move approval of resolution number seventeen dash zero two nine, wave, but we don't. Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B four, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the annual assessments for unpaid water bills, or water fees, rather. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the Board of Directors of the Victorville Water District adopt resolution number V W D seventeen dash zero zero six confirming the annual assessments for unpaid water fees at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do not have any cards. Therefore, I don't have anyone that will be speaking on this item. So I close the public hearing. Do we have any questions or comments from council members?
Madam Chair, the question is a clarification only. I'm aware that we have two different public hearings on two different matters, this being water, the other one being sewer, garbage, sanitation, and so on. But still, there are same property, same property on the same location, and listings more than one listing. I just want to make sure that they're combined.
At the point of, yeah, so once the county, I'll check with staff again tomorrow to assure that the water, because we're going to send them two different resolutions, because those resolutions represent two different governing bodies. So the water service charges are related to the Water Agency, the balance of the charges are related to the city. And I want to say that they would combine them, because they actually would charge the resident a separate thirty cent charge for each one of those lines. So I want to make sure that we can give them the instruction that they combine them into one.
I don't think I asked the question correctly, and my apologies. You look under that, you, under the public hearing for water, you will find property owner, the property, and the assessment, and right below it is repeated with a different amount. And then if you go back to the item, public hearing we just had, same thing, there are several property owners, and they have more than one listing. There's a fee for each one of those recorded, which we shouldn't have to incur, and I think there's a fee when you try to resolve those separately. So, there may be two different recordings, one for water, one for the other, I don't know, but I couldn't figure out why there was two water for the same property, same amount, didn't make any sense. So that, you can do it later, but I just, somebody needs to look at it. It's a computer printout, maybe it's supposed to be that way, maybe it's not, but I know staff will look at it.
Yeah, we'll take it.
The other thing that, to make clear for the public especially, is that if any of these proposed liens are paid between now and the time before it's filed, then it would not be a lien at that point. So we'll run another report, make sure that anything that can be combined will be combined, and then, anything that has been paid would then fall off. We wouldn't actually file on any of these listed if they pay between now and, I think it's August twelfth?
That's correct.
Okay.
Move approval?
Second. Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B five, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against granting a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Sealit LLC Limousine Service. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation would be that the City Council adopt resolution number seventeen dash zero four seven at the close of the public hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any cards from anyone. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Are there any questions or comments from members?
Yes, I have a comment, questions, actually. So what's the cost of a business license for the limousine service? That's the first question. Where do those fees go, and how often is this license renewed and paid?
I actually don't know the cost of the business license. I'm looking out to find, Chris, if he happens to know, come on down, Chris. And then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gomez, if you could repeat the other two questions that you asked?
Yes, so I know they're going to go pick it up at the police's office, so I was hoping maybe Chief Schuler knew the question, but what's the cost of a business license for the limousine service? That was the first question. And then the second one was, where does this money go to? And the third one was, how often is it renewed?
The business license probably ranges from, I can't give you the specifics, because there's eight different classifications of business type, but they're in the one hundred to three hundred dollar range, and that is an annual, they would renew that annually, and the renewal fee is usually a little bit less than the initial business license fee.
Yeah, business license fees, though, go into the general fund.
Yes.
Which is used to pay for all the city services, including the staff that work in business license.
Thank you. That was all.
Can I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second. Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item B six, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the confirmation of annual assessments for landscape maintenance assessment districts, drainage facilities assessment districts, and maintenance assessments, assessment districts. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council approve the engineers' reports for landscape maintenance assessment districts one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, drainage facilities assessment districts one, two, three, and maintenance assessment districts one and two, and adopt resolution numbers seventeen dash zero one six, zero one seven, zero one eight, zero one nine, zero two zero, zero two one, zero two two, zero two three, zero two four, zero two five, zero two six, zero two seven, and zero two eight.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing. And I do have one card. I believe it's Donna Granger.
Hi, I have a question about this. Does this mean that you're going to find people that don't clean up their areas?
I can answer that.
Okay.
No, it doesn't. We do, code enforcement sweeps throughout the city. It's a slow process, because we've got tens of thousands of lots to check, but this is actually in neighborhoods that have publicly funded landscaping on the outside, or have passeos and things. I, my home's in Eagle Ranch, we have passeos. So this is, the property owners in that area pay an annual assessment, and so that's what this is for, but it doesn't, this item doesn't go to any kind of a fee for failure to clean up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
That was the only card I had. Therefore, I close the public hearing. And are there any questions or comments from members?
Yes, I have several questions. Why is there a recommendation of two point seven percent Consumer Price Index to be included in the assessment fees collected for the Landscape Maintenance Assessment District seven for this coming year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and not for the LA MDSs one through six or eight?
So when they were originally adopted, number seven had an annual review per the Consumer Price Index, the others were not adopted with that language.
Then I also have some questions regarding the Drainage Facilities Assessment District. That's number two for the same year, is that the same response?
Yes.
And who's the treasurer for the City of Victorville?
George Harris II is the treasurer at this time.
Oh, okay. Thank you. And in conjunction with, so, the Landscape Maintenance Assessment District is an acronym for LMAD, so I'm just going to say LMAD. Number three and number two are undeveloped parcels, and there's developed parcels, is that correct? Is all inclusive with Brentwood? I need that clarification.
LMAD, or LMAD three is the Brentwood area, it may have undeveloped parcels in it, so the assessment would be for both developed and undevelopment, undeveloped parcels in that district.
And just for the record, if Carol Lee can provide, later on, just before the next meeting, all the assessment diagrams for LMADs, DFADs, and MADs. I think I mentioned that to her, but they're not inside the agenda, and I would have loved to have them a part of the agenda, but they're not here.
If you don't mind, I'll send it to all the council members right now.
Thank you. And then also, I was looking at all the resolutions, so I'm just going to read one part, one section, so, and that would clarify the rest of them. Okay, so, section one and all the resolutions have the same one, so it says, "That said, hearing was duly opened on July seven, twenty seventeen, that each and every step in the proceedings prior to and including to the public hearing has been duly and regularly taken." What does that date refer to?
I believe that is going to be a typo, and it should say July eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
So before we even make a motion to have this approved, I would like for this correction to be July eighteenth. I thought that might be the case. Every single resolution has this, and because it is very important, the accountability that council has in all these types of documents, that before we approve anything like that, or if maybe there's a motion to amend and have this as an amendment, that would be great. I just don't want to be responsible for something that's an error, and I, we kind of missed out on it.
Yeah, the record should reflect a clerical error in terms of the date, that the date is July eighteenth, twenty seventeen.
Okay, so for all resolutions from seventeen dash zero sixteen all the way up until seventeen dash zero twenty-eight?
Correct.
And who prepared this resolution?
I don't know.
I'm waiting for mine to pop up. Do you know who prepared this, Keith? I'm not sure the relevance of that, but...
Well, the relevance is, I thought resolutions were prepared by attorneys, but I don't know if it's staff or attorney, it just depends, so I just wanted to know.
Could have been one of two, it could have been either City Attorney's Office, or because this is routine in nature and done every year, it could have been replicated from previous years, so it could have been staff. I don't have the exact answer for you.
Okay, that's fine. And what are, I'm looking at all of these LMADs, MADs, and DFADs, right? So I was wondering if I can get some kind of demographics, populations, any kind of density with income levels with these landscapes associations and districts? I'd like to kind of further look into where is it that we have these districts, if that would be possible. I know that's not a part of our agenda item either.
I'm not aware that we have the demographics to that level of detail by LMAD, but we can take a look, certainly.
I would appreciate that. And I think I have one last question, and this has to do, and just in combination with all the districts, I did notice that whether it's half of them had a cost inflator slash utility cost increases, and others didn't. What is the difference between ones having it and the others not having them?
On those, it just depends on how it was originally adopted. Anything that we do currently, we always try to put some level of cost inflator in there that's fair, simply because costs go up, and unfortunately, many of these were adopted with a flat fee that we don't have the ability to raise, so as costs of maintenance goes up, we simply have to spend the same dollar amount, so ultimately, the, those common areas suffer, because we can't spend additional dollars, because they didn't have that cost inflator, so we put it in each one now.
So we don't subsidize when we have that flat fee?
No, it would be entirely inappropriate for the rest of the city to pay for an upgraded landscape area that benefits a neighborhood other than their own.
Okay, and I thought I had a last question, but because we have LMADs versus DFADs versus MADs, I, you know, one of them is landscape maintenance, the other one is drainage and landscape, and the other one is maintenance, is that the case? They're basically just maintenance, but they're different districts and different categories of some sort?
Different types.
Different types.
Different types, depends on what they're maintaining exactly.
Right, thank you, that was all.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to motion to approve the recommendation exactly as it was read by the same clerk, but the subject of the changing, making the typographical change.
I'm sorry, for a point of clarification.
Second.
I wasn't able to hear what Councilmember Kennedy said, with the exception of, what was it?
Just to correct the date.
Okay, thank you.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, we move on to consent counter. Consent counter, item C one through C seventeen can be approved with one, with one motion, unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion that has not been discussed before our meeting. Otherwise, we can just go ahead and approve from C one through C seventeen.
There's a couple of items I need to pull out for discussion. I'd like to pull C one through C four, C seven through C eleven.
Just a second. I do have a card. I have to pull them? Is that one of the... Go ahead.
Okay, so I'd like to pull items C one through C four, and C seven through C eleven, and C thirteen, and C fourteen, and adopt with one motion, C five, C six, C twelve, C fifteen, through C seventeen. So I don't know if we're going to first, with one motion adopt, or I can continue?
I want, I'd like to request pull item C six. And I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Is there, if there is four, eight, nine, ten, eleven, these items pulled, can we have the discussion first, and then hopefully just adopt with one motion? It's...
Preferably, yes, discussion first.
You also have a card, is that correct? Is it on one of the items that's pulled, or is it on one of the remaining items?
Well, I've written all of them here, but if C one through C four, C seven through eleven, C thirteen and fourteen, and C six, there are so many. My only question is, why don't we discuss those? If we can't have a resolution, we simply pull those out, continue them to the next council meeting, and the remainder that's left are approved, approve them with one motion.
Madam Mayor, Mayor Protim Cox and council, I don't want to provide you legal advice, but just simply procedurally from experience, my understanding is that is allowable to have a discussion on each of the items pulled, but make one motion at the end, assuming ultimately the questions are answered.
Is that acceptable to everyone?
Acceptable.
I defer to Councilmember Gomez, who wants to discuss or pull C one through C four.
Well, I'm not going to vote yes on all of them, so if I can vote no on something that I don't, I don't see the issue.
What am I doing now?
Well, if I might, these are requested to ask questions on, or make comments on, and the first item is C one, so Councilmember Gomez has questions or comments.
So go ahead and do C one through C four.
So, before I vote to approve... So before I vote to approve this item, I'd like to have complete information, information on the agenda regarding which 13 buildings are we speaking about? And which two buildings are the ones that have asbestos? I don't have that information in front of me or in the agenda.
I'm sorry, which two buildings have what?
Which 13 buildings are we speaking about that we did a certain completion? And which two buildings are the ones that had asbestos?
Sophie Smith, our Economic Development Director, has details on that.
So it's an 18-building apartment complex. I don't have in front of me the numbers of the 13 buildings that the roof is rehabilitated. It's 13 of the existing 18. Did you want the actual numbers, or?
So it's one building, or it's 18 buildings?
It's an apartment complex, and they're divided into 18 buildings with a number of units in each.
Oh, okay, okay. So then, that clarifies. I thought there was different around the city, so that clarifies it for me. Also, tell me a little bit more about the 104 units, and the agreement between the county and the home program.
There's no county agreement.
Okay, I thought that it was negotiations between county and the home program with 104 units with low to very low housing apartments?
No county agreement, but there is an affordability covenant on the 104 units that is placed on the property so that the buildings that we assisted through the federal grant home funds are deed restricted and need to be used and maintained for low or moderate income households.
Okay, thank you.
There is reference to San Marino County in the staff report, but that's simply where these will be filed. But there's not an agreement.
That's where the covenants will be recorded, I'm sorry.
Right, County Recorder's Office.
That's good for C1.
Okay.
For C2, what was the total cost of the water warehouse number one paving project? And what funds did it come out of?
The, the funding source was from the Water District with one. I don't have the dollar amount in front of me, and it's not in the staff write-up. This is just a standard notice of completion involving the public infrastructure that was built to help put a deceleration lane along with curb gutter to make ingress and egress to the district warehouse much more safer staff. Certainly something we can follow up with on the dollar amount, if that's okay.
Yes. Was this one of the items within the last two months that we voted on?
It was brought before the council before, yes.
Thank you. And then for C3.
What was, does that, does that answer the question?
Yes, that, that answered my question. For C3. This is probably going to be also for Sophie. Sophie, are you aware if VVC is working together with other, I think they're called MROs, right? Maintenance, something rather, operations at SCLA currently?
I think the question is whether or not VVC is in the program, the AMP program that is housed in these facilities. If the graduates from that program are being used to staff our MRO, our maintenance, repair, and overhaul companies that are tenants at the airport?
Yes.
Yes, that's my understanding. That's the whole purpose of the program, to make sure that our aviation tenants have a qualified and trained and skilled labor force that are certificated in the FAA program.
So that includes pathways to aviation? Are you aware of that?
Does it include, I'm sorry?
Would that be pathways to aviations? I know there's an MRO there that goes by pathway avi, aviation, so I was wondering if they're involved.
I'm not familiar with that company or that term.
Okay.
This is only with the college, actually. It's not with the MRO facilities, but their graduates do go on to work at SCLA, as well as other airports around the area and around the world.
And how many, how many maintenance aircraft companies, was that two that you had said? I think I'd asked that question. Two aircraft companies or organizations currently at SCLA, right? There's only two, I think, I believe?
There's two maintenance, repair, overhaul stations that are licensed under FAA Part 145. There's a number of other aviation-related companies that do service that can be considered maintenance. Leading Edge is, is one, for example, that does aircraft painting.
Okay, and, so I, I'm going to make a comment now. Of the 12 years of its 11 years, COMAV has received a very distinguishable recognition award that only five companies in the nation have received. So I'd like to see if Economic Development and SCLA can start collaborating with COMAV to begin the healing process and establish a, a strong relationship to help our skilled workforce and create a sustainable economy right here in the backyards. So that was a comment that I wanted to make. The other question that I have is, I was looking at the standard sublease agreement, and I was wondering what day in August are we going to be filling that in?
So the term of the amendment will be, the date that it's executed is what we'll fill in with that August date, but the actual start of the period, the term, is September 1 of this year.
Yeah, I saw the, the commencement date, and then I saw the termination date, but I was wondering if there was already negotiations where you would be adding a day in August?
We usually add the, the date for the agreement, which will, is when that August date will be filled in, when the agreement is fully executed, which will, if approved tonight, will be sometime in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, and are we charging to sublease buildings 717B and 732B? It's a, whether it's a dollar or whatever amount it is?
We are not charging the school district for housing the AMP program. No.
Okay, and, and then, I know you don't have the, the standard sublease agreement in front of you, but this is, you might understand my question. My question stems from Exhibit A. There was intentionally things that were deleted precisely 3, 7, 8, 10, and 11, and I just want to understand why their deletions were included.
Just give me a quick second here.
Now, 3 is the option to extend, 7, security deposit, 8, late charge, which?
Oh, okay. So what you have before you is a standard template that is drafted by the City Attorney and SCLA Attorney's Office. And if a particular section does not apply to that transaction, such as no posting of security deposit by someone like VVC, then that section would be intentionally deleted. And, and so would other sections that are not applicable to that transaction.
Okay, and then I saw a lengthy packet, the Southern California Logistics Airport Rules and Regulations. I went through it, but I was wondering, why was that part added? Was it because of the schooling and the nature of SCLA's involvement?
All properties that are leased at SCLA are subject to the FAA rules and regulations, and, and they're referenced in the document. And as a courtesy to the tenant, we also include those as an exhibit.
Okay, and then, since we're approving today the amendment, sublease agreement, I was trying to see if I found the original, or one of them beforehand, so I can read what we were actually changing. And I don't think, I figured that it was in here. I might have asked too late for it to be added, but is it in here? Because I didn't, I didn't recognize it.
It is in there. The whole document that's attached is the first agreement, the one that is expiring at the end of August.
Okay.
And then there's a one or two-page amendment that is simply changing and updating the term. So what you're approving tonight is actually that one or two-page document. Let me just see if I...
I did see that part.
It's, it's right after the depiction, the site, the map of the properties, and it's entitled First Amendment to Standard Sublease Agreement, and then it is two pages long. That's what's modifying and amending the longer original lease that is set to expire.
Okay, and can the City of Victorville be considering to be subsidized AMP since we're not charging anything? Is that what we're doing? It's called a subsidy?
Correct. Yes, we are supporting the school with, with the renovation. Correct.
Okay, and then, this is my last question. Since we are providing utilities as well, are we providing, I think BMS has gas and electricity. What is the value of that? Do we know?
In 1718, our budget for utilities and small repairs that we make pursuant to this lease, we budgeted about $20,000 for the year.
Would that be just pertinent to AMP school, for the two buildings?
That's correct.
Oh, so our cost is about $20,000 just with the gas and with the lighting?
And with unforeseen, a small budget for unforeseen building repairs, yes. The three combined.
Okay, all right, thank you. That was, that was all.
Sure.
Madam Mayor, if I might, and maybe as background that's helpful to the council involving the AMP program, it's something that we, as the airport, have been involved in for many years. In fact, before transitioning the O&M responsibilities of the school to the VVC, we, as the city slash airport authority, actually started up the program working with the local businesses out there. And a large reason for why the program was developed was because there was a larger concern among the industry, aviation in general, that there was not sufficient amount of workforce, skilled, trained workforce at the time. And of course, the concern after that becomes that there needs to be a pool of available workforce to draw from, so there needs to be a recurring pool. So we had worked very closely and were proud of actually developing the program. It started largely relying on grant funds. And when grant funds dried out, then we had to make a conscious decision of how to continue to run the school and provide effectively an education source so that the companies that we're trying to attract to the airport actually had qualified labor to draw from. So we had actually gone through a transition process where we did, in fact, transition the O&M, the educational component to the college. And our contribution to help keep things going certainly was providing to us what were considered simple things, such as facilities and utilities. I'm aware that today still, the companies at the airport draw from those that go through the school. I'm also aware that the VVC has a very high success rate of not only graduating students through the program, but getting them to actually pass the FAA AMP test. So it's been something that we've been proud of. It's certainly been helpful in the larger mission of the airport to, to try to make sure we have an adequate labor force to support those industries that we're trying to attract out there.
Thank you, yes. We do appreciate that. I have a question for City Manager. Do you take the time to go over the agenda with Ms. Gomez before we come to the meeting?
We have a regularly scheduled agenda briefing every Monday, and we respond to any questions that, that she brings up.
And she doesn't have any of these questions at that time?
You're kind of sticking me in the middle, but at times, she asks questions in the public session that she has asked, presumably to get that answer to the public as well, rather than just to herself. But there are many other questions that she has asked privately that she has not asked tonight, I can tell you that.
Thank you.
I'm going to continue with C4. We have BMS reports here. I don't have a summary of the readings for the actual wattage and the, the gas. So I was wondering, just in the future, if you would add like a small synopsis so that it kind of guides me as to what it is that I'm looking at with the results with wattage with quarter one and quarter two or quarter three? That would be helpful.
There are graphs. Are you, meaning you want the actual numbers inside of the graph?
So, right, so I'm looking at the graph right now, and I'm looking at quarter two and quarter three. They differ in wattage, so I was thinking, well, maybe there's population, there's more usage, so clearly that. But I don't want to speculate. I want to understand literally what Keith sees, and if he were to write a small synopsis of what these bar graphs mean. I mean, with his expertise, I would understand.
And, and I thank you for the comments and the feedback, actually. That's helpful to us. This is a fairly new report for us, probably just started putting together in the last year. So, you know, what we've really attempted to do is try to give as much general information to show at least how the utility is operating. It's actually a work in progress. In fact, I was just talking with staff today about doing, completing the annual. So certainly, we can incorporate that in. I'm actually looking at perhaps adding some additional information that I think is, is meaningful. So we can certainly put some numbers in there. That's not a problem.
And then, I don't know, I don't know if you guys wanted to vote C1 through C4, or I shall continue. These items that I pull out are on consent calendar, and because it's a vote that I'm going to be granted and voting on, it's really important to me. When I have staff at my hand, everybody is here. Usually, my sitting down is only with two of them, and if they don't have a response, I don't just sit back and wait and not get a response. So I appreciate that we have staff available, and that council members have the right to be able to ask. So I do appreciate each one of your patience. If you notice, I'm one of the newest council members, so I, I greatly appreciate each of your patience and the understanding that we're learning together, the audience, and, and maybe not all of us, but some of us. So I don't know if you want to continue with C6.
Madam Mayor, move approval from consent calendar, C1 through C6.
Just to, to clarify, Mayor Protim Cox asked for C6 to be pulled, so...
C1 through C5. Move approval, C1 through C5.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Do you want to discuss C5?
I had a, I had a comment on C6, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
About two and a half, three years ago, I pointed out to the city council that if the great American dream was to buy a home, that our, our help for the very low and the low-income individuals was great, except that I objected to the huge amount of down payment that we were providing. At that time, as I recall, there was a house for sale for $156,000. We were paying $45,000 of housing funds to make the down payment. I argued at that time that if we would restrict it to a reasonable amount, to help people over the hump, say 15,000 or 20,000 max, we could help twice the number of people. And council took no action at that time. C6 is an item where, I don't know how much the cost was, but the city's assistance through the housing was $49,500. It was foreclosed on a loss of the city of $44,929. Clearly, council needs to establish a policy on this before we keep losing taxpayers' money because we provide too much assistance for one individual wants to ride with the American dream, and when we could have probably provided assistance to three or four families. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah? Who had C7?
I do. So Eric, this question is going to be for you. In terms of ADA compliance and renovation at SCLA, since council approved not to exceed a specific amount, would you happen to know how much money was expended? And what was the federal monies that happened to be the remainder, if any, and where did it go?
Actually, Eric's not here, so I'll ask Sophie, who works closely with Eric, to answer that question.
For this particular project, the ADA upgrades and improvements were funded with the CDBG funds. Airport applied and received a $50,000 budget. And just under $50,000 was spent to widen the door so that it could be wheelchair accessible. The ramp leading up to the door was actually, the slope was too steep, so the slope was lessened. And then there were parking lot improvements, like handicap spaces, and striping and signage added all as a part of this project. So the federal funding, it was a federal CDBG fund that was the funding source for this particular project.
Okay, thank you. And that was my next question. I see pictures, but I wasn't sure. I mean, I could tell that the asphalt was now darker, but I wasn't sure if there was an expansion or the rampway. So I'm just requesting for clarity, maybe something small, like even written between a picture saying this shows expansion of ADA compliance or something? Because I wasn't sure if I was looking at just emblems being added or what was happening. And so that was my next question, but you happened to answer it, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on the same item, if I may. Is staff authorized to go to bid without council's approval on these items?
To go to bid, as opposed to awarding the bid?
No, when you go to bid, doesn't that come to the council? And awarding the bid is also on the council, and the time you award the bid, you have the bidder amount, and you have the budgeted amount?
Correct.
All correct. So we've been over this totally before, and this is only a notice of completion. They completed the job that the council authorized. So all of the questions have been before the council already. So I think maybe staff can just go back and provide an earlier agenda item and answer most of these questions. Thank you.
Then for C8. George, for C8 and C9, would you mind adding a synopsis of what the things are emboldened? Like, for example, ID number?
are emboldened, like for example, ID number? I know I've asked this quite a few times. Maybe you can add what the ID number reference is to, I don't know what the word advices is, maybe adding some clarity to that. People in the audience or people in our general community have also access to the same agenda that council does. So in allowing them to understand what they are looking at, it would benefit not only a new council member, but also the audience that takes the time to go through each agenda item and also read it themselves. We have about a hundred and twenty-five thousand people approximately, and I know forty-four thousand of those are registered voters, and they would have, like to have that accessibility as well. So that would really help us out.
Well, actually, if I may, the ID number is a reference to the actual employee. So that number represents actual employees being paid. Just to get some clarity on what you're requesting, does that answer your question?
So it just says employee ID number. I mean, that would be, we wouldn't, you know, speculate, yeah, that would work out.
Got it, understood, okay.
And then for C ten. On six twenty-eight, twenty seventeen, I see one item, Mazarick Victor Valley LP. They are given a mighty amount, and I remember it came to an agenda item, we gave them fifty-eight thousand based on a contractual agreement. So I was wondering, what is this amount referred to? I wasn't familiar that we were giving any more subsidies to them all.
If it's a number, yeah, this is actually the total amount. The fifty-eight thousand was an additional appropriation above the amount that was already budgeted. So this is the total amount that goes to them all.
Thank you. And for C eleven. We hired a consultant approving monies October twenty fifteen, and now more is required, I see. What are the complexities that Tyler Technologies has now come across? And did staff bring a visual representation to assist with understanding how the city will be facilitating these new permits and so forth? I know we spoke about it very little, but we didn't go into any extent.
Certainly, we did when it was originally authorized by the council, the whole project. I know that Mr. Harris has been involved in the drafting of this agenda item and can explain in better detail than I can some of the complexities that befell the project.
So in working with staff on this, from what I understand, there are a lot of requests that staff has made as the project developed. They requested additional forms be created. They requested two additional modules that after the original scope was drawn, we determined would actually help the residents with this particular project. So these are, this was not, from what I understand, items that were suggested by the vendor. These were items requested by the staff to expand the project.
Okay, so then we're going to add an additional seventy-eight hundred dollars, which would be a total cost from taxpayer money of about eight hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars, is that correct?
Correct. So the total project, when you include the purchase of the software, as well as a couple of the modules and some of the hardware, I believe, that was needed along the way, totals the total project cost. Not necessarily that is the total project going to that one vendor, it's just we add that up. So for this particular request, the eight hundred ninety thousand is the total amendment to the contract.
Okay, and then in reading through that document, it also said if the next process there is more additional service needed, that they would let us know. Are we anticipating another amendment to the monies that are already going to be approved?
At this time, no, but what I do understand is that there is ample budget that's been approved through the budget process for this project. We have not spent it all. So if you read on the staff report, you'll see there's a balance of total budget available still that could be used for the project. So it may require additional council approval if it's part of the contract or an amendment to the contract, or maybe other elements of the project that were required to purchase as we complete the project.
And in twenty fifteen, was there an RFP done for this?
I was not here, but I believe so. Was there an RFP, or did we actually interview a few companies that, okay. Actually, let me have Joe come elaborate. Come on down.
We didn't do an RFP. Tyler Technologies, we did an RFP back in two thousand nine, I believe it was, just like a new citywide ERP, human resources, finance, utility building, asset management system. And Tyler Technologies won that RFP. And when it became time to replace our legacy permitting system, the TideMark system, we call it, we went to Tyler because it already integrates with what we already have. We found it'd be cheaper to continue using Tyler products and modules that already integrate with our existing investment. So like the Intergov asset, it integrates with our existing GIS applications that we already own. It integrates out of the box with our Tyler Cash Sharing application that we're using in customer service. It integrates directly with our GL, integrates directly with our content management server. So all of those advantages made it, made sense to keep it sole source and just continue our relationship with Tyler Technologies.
Ultimately, that decision is within the purchasing code as an allowable methodology, and it did come back, come to the council as part of the award to approve the use of that sole source because of those reasons.
And we did solicit some unofficial bids from competitors to make sure it was reasonable. And the Tyler Intergov, because of all of the Tyler stock that we already own, was substantially more affordable than their closest competitor.
And then I took a note for Exhibit B. Are we also paying for his travel expenses or Tyler's expenses?
If we have them come onsite, we do have to pay for their travel expenses. That's an estimated budget. We try really hard to work through go-to-meeting and use web technologies. There have been some instances where they come out, like training is an example, where we like to have someone come onsite and present in person because it's more fluid. You can get more accomplished than doing it through a WebEx session. But for most of the business process review and design, we've been very successful just leveraging go-to-meeting and web sort of presentations.
So then for the training, I know there's twelve city staff members that are being trained, so then he probably has to come up here and train you, or you guys do it through telecommunication? What do you do?
We haven't really decided yet. We have the budget there, so that's an option. If we get there and we feel like we got it, we've been working on this for a year now, and we feel pretty comfortable with it, but I don't want to guess what we're going to do when it actually comes to the official training.
Okay, right, thank you. Item C seven through C eleven, we can probably vote on one motion because that would be a yes. C thirteen and C fourteen, I'm going to vote no on the placement of items by city council members, and no on the five-minute limit. So if we want to go ahead and just first do the C seven through C eleven with one motion as a yes.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item twelve was not pulled, so it's kind of hanging out there right now.
Item twelve.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
And then, like I said, item C thirteen, it's a no on placing items on the agenda by council members. I don't agree with that still, just like I don't agree with the five-minute limit when it came to the council comments. So if you want to call it for a vote?
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Item fourteen, Councilmember Gomez requested that one to be pulled. I'm not, I don't know why.
C thirteen through C fourteen, yeah. Well, because I was under the assumption that there was the no placement of items, and then the other one was the five-minute limit, no, so no, that was my mistake.
That was on one item, so I believe that leaves C fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Did we get C six?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
Move approval on those last four items.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Are we done with consent calendar?
That covers all of them.
Looks like finally, yeah. Okay, now we move on to written communications. Item D one. Appointment of voting delegate and alternate to the League of California Cities twenty-seventeen Annual Business Meeting, General Assembly. I may say before I read the recommendation, the League of Cities are only requesting the delegate and the alternate. However, they leave it open for anyone else that wants to attend, except that taxpayers pay for the conference. And I don't see that it's necessary for every council member to attend every conference that is available. I'm just being transparent here.
Do you have any interest in being?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
And I also have a comment on that same item. If I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the California League of Cities is, the City of Victorville pays for membership, and if you can see, I also attend. That's a great learning experience, and a lot of the items that I've come forth to understand is because I actually do attend. So I give everyone thanks because as a council member, we do need a continual education, whether we've been at the bench or at the dais ten, fifty, or sixty years, it's always important to continue to have that continual education. So I do appreciate that honor of being able to attend and get more education.
Item D two. Proposed submittal of used oil payment program grant, cycle eight, fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council adopt Resolution Number seventeen dash zero four six, authorizing the submittal of a used oil payment program grant and designating the city manager as the signature authority.
No questions. The council move approval of Resolution?
I do have a quick question.
Sorry, I withdraw my motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just interested, is the resolution required yearly for authorization and submittal? Is that procedural?
Part of the procedure, yes. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I just want to know if every time we get a resolution, that it changes yearly?
Yeah, we do have to adopt or accept this grant on an annual basis.
Thank you.
It's a non-competitive grant, so it's not like we're competing. It's part of the used oil recycling. You pay a small fee when you recycle oil. We get a little bit of that money. I think there's eleven million statewide. It's programmed to us, it's programmed to every city in the state so that we can educate our residents about the program.
Mr. Kennedy?
All I want to do is approve this and thank Mr. Negretti for bringing it to us two years ago. But Christian, I think everybody would like to hear a little bit about the process you've gone through, how long it's taken, why the skate park, why here, what's good about this location?
Councilmember Kennedy, you're one item ahead of us. We're on the used oil grant, sorry.
What? I had to withdraw my motion. Okay, if there's no further discussion, to make this easy, I've moved to approve Resolution seventeen dash zero four six.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Go away, Christian.
None opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Item D three, now this is the one. Construction of a skate park at Doris Davis Park. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the city council authorize the construction of a skate park and perimeter interpretive desert landscaping at Doris Davies Park and authorize the appropriation of available recreation development impact funds, REC DIF.
Mr. Gunter, I think your presence is requested down front. While he's on his way, I do want to make a couple of things clear. Number one, these are development impact fees that could not be used for any other purpose other than the new recreation facilities. Additionally, there is a photo in the staff report, and that is just an artist's rendition. That's not the final design. This is actually a design-build contract, so I want to make that clear. And then one thing that I've come aware, become aware of, that has been a concern on social media at least, we are referring to it as a skate park because people understand what that definition is, but actually because of relatively recent changes to state law, our exemption from risk management would now apply to any non-motorized traffic. So this is going to be for skateboarders, for BMX riders, for roller skates, roller blades, and actually, there's a really, some really neat videos of kids in wheelchairs who go to these parks, and they have specialized wheels on parts of their wheelchair that allow them to enjoy these facilities as well, so.
That's exactly correct. So I'd be glad to answer any specific questions if you have some. One of the things I'd like to pass out to you is, back in twenty thirteen, I believe it was, was when we first started looking at this process, we actually had a citizen come to us and talk about skate parks. I'd like to kind of pass these around, if I may, and share these with the council. These are their original studies, and one of the things inside these is the community concerns section. I think you'd all be interested to review some of those. It addresses everything from crime, noise, injury, all those things. But I thought I'd share that with you as well. And I know we're going to have a lot of other questions tonight still, too, so I'll start with this, if I may.
I'd like to make comments last, so if there's any other comments, I'd appreciate them.
And Christian, can you explain the funding source for this?
Yes.
I know we're doubling up on what Doug has talked about, but let's...
Yes, the recreation developer impact fees are a part of the fees that we charge for the development of properties within the City of Victorville city limits. Those recreation fees, DIF fees, are specifically earmarked for recreation and park facilities. They are not for maintenance, they're not for operations, they're for actually building new facilities within the park to provide our citizens in the neighborhoods of the city.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
If we wanted to, even if we wanted to, we could not use them to hire police or fire.
That is correct.
That would be a violation of law to do that.
I'd like, I'd like that to be crystal clear. This is a big discretionary expenditure, but it's got to be limited to this kind of a thing.
Yes, that is correct.
Just to provide a little bit of color, there's actually, I believe, five different development impact fees. There's a roads fee, which we use to build roads. There's a facilities fee, there's some kind of a telecommunications fee, there's a, I believe, a safety facilities fee, and then the rec and park fee. And each one of those is collected differently across the type of property. So in this case, almost all of the fees collected would have been collected from housing units, additional housing units built in Victorville over the last ten years or so. When you build a commercial property, you don't pay for recreation, you pay more for roads and other facilities. So these are all held separately and spent only for those things that they are collected for.
What are we having in that fund, and how much are we spending on this?
The last time I looked at that fund, it was about two point three, two point six million, if I'm not mistaken. The total amount of this request is just under six hundred thousand. That also includes, in that fund is about ninety-six thousand or seven thousand for Desert Interpretive Garden to go around the perimeter of the skate park site, so that we actually can integrate water conservation features as well as the skate park.
Yeah, one of the complicating factors, Christian mentioned it took several years, is that the Foxborough bonds from, I don't know when, two thousand and seven, I believe, actually leveraged a number of city-owned properties, including the parks, as collateral for those bonds. So in order to move forward with any type of serious construction at our parks, we have to get approval from BNP Paribas, who actually holds a letter of credit that secures those bonds. So that's an item that's included in the agenda item, but that negotiation can take some time, simply because we communicate with their staff in New York, who then communicates with their staff in Paris, legal teams on both ends, and ultimately... with their staff in Paris, legal teams on both ends, and ultimately, they have granted approval each time we've asked, but it is a process.
And this process taken, has taken over a year just to get approval from BNP Paribas.
One more item. Good chance you're not going to see me out in that skate park. Come on. I gave up skateboarding a long time ago.
As did I.
What do you expect the usage to be? What have your studies looked at?
We haven't looked specifically at the, the local demographic. There's a saying about skate parks. If you don't have a skate park in your city, your city is a skate park. Kids are going to find something to do. I don't know how many times I've been driving down the road and seeing a group of kids playing out in the street, and maybe a couple of them have skateboards, they're walking around, somebody jumps on one, suddenly it slides out from somebody's feet and it goes out into the street in front of a car. Providing kids a safe place to go do things is kind of why we're here. It's an important aspect of building a city and building recreation facilities that are offered throughout the region. We are the last city that doesn't have a skate park. The selection of the, the location that we have is, is a good location for several reasons. Doris Davies Park, it's right on Hughes Road. So if there's something going on there that shouldn't be going on, and just like anything else in the park, the closer it is to the road and the closer the amenities are to the street, where if the police are walking by, they can see what's, or driving by, they can see what's going on, illicit behavior is going to drop. And that's a good thing. It gives kids who want to be out there enjoying the skateboarding for the skateboarding, a chance to do what they want to do, which is kind of why we build it. We have a second choice for a site, possibly at Hook Park. We've spoken about that as well in the past. It's still a secondary site, in terms of starting off and a place to go and having a good place that's safe and on the street where the police driving by can watch and make sure everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing, it's a good location. Some of the things inside the flyer that I just passed out to you on the community concerns, one of the things is decibel level studies. They're actually in there for a number of cities who've studied this issue, because they've been concerned about the neighbors. We are too. When this went back to the Community Services Advisory Committee back in 2015, it was sent back to council, by council, to the advisory committee. We wanted to make sure that we were looking at being good neighbors as well. One of the things we want to do is make sure that if there is noise attenuation to be done, we plant a line of trees along the property line to make sure that noise levels are down, so we don't disturb anybody. Another thing we have to be concerned of is making sure that the amenity itself isn't over a couple of two or three or even four feet high, because we don't want people looking down to other neighbors' backyards. There aren't going to be any 12-foot tall skate ramps where people are going to be up on top and then swooping down and coming down the other side. It's not going to happen. But we'd like to present to you what we'd like to do. So we have a design consultant on board who we think is going to give us some excellent drawings and some good ideas. You've already seen some of the rendering on it, so we're asking for your approval.
I think it's down to you, Eric, I think, but I don't, I don't know if anybody else has questions.
Yeah, I also have questions. So if I may.
Sure.
I know we spoke and said that the funds come from the development fees, but it wasn't said, or I didn't understand, that it was the only. So is that the only way we get to fund this park through development fees, or is there something else coming from anything else that we would pull?
There are no funds planned at this time for, for anything other than developer impact fees, the REC DIF. If, and it is an if still, and one of the reasons that we parted out the water conservation portion, we would like to see, because there are always possibilities to see if we can get grant funds for the water conservation portion and the Desert Interpretive Garden around it, and if we can save money that way, we certainly will. The problem is, is that I don't have the design drawings yet in order to turn in, to have them studied, to see if we can apply for a grant with those drawings. It's kind of a catch 22. So without authorizing the one, I can't move forward with the other.
And then for that garden that's going to be across the skate park, are those also coming from development fees, or that's different?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part.
The garden across, that's going to be across the skate park, is that also coming from development impact fees, or is that a different fund?
Yes, it will be, it will all be development impact fees, and that would be the Desert Interpretive Garden that would be around the perimeter of it, as well as the skate park itself.
And then I know we were looking at a second project. Do you know what was that second project that we were looking at?
I don't want to, it is, one of the things we'd like to do is have a facility on the east side of the freeway and a facility on the west side of the freeway, because it's tough for kids to cross to be able to go from one to the other. It's a plan. It's nothing that's in writing yet.
So we didn't know if it was a skate, what is it, a dog park or a swimming pool? It's still in the works?
There are things that are still in the work, but even, I was specifically referring to a second skate park.
Oh, okay.
But right now, again, when we set it out, set on this pass, and Doug mentioned, we were talking with BNP Paribas. We're also talking with the high school district about a secondary site. I haven't got that approval yet for that one. If one had come before the other, I might be here standing and promoting the other site.
Oh, got it.
But I rolled the dice, and we ended up with the site at Doris Davies.
And we did have a direction from council in, I want to say in a January meeting, to pursue this, as well as a pool or some kind of water park on the west side of the freeway, and in addition, a dog park somewhere in the city as well. So we're still working on those, those will come forward, but those are some of the things that would be spent with the remaining development impact fees that are in that account.
Correct.
Also, I was looking at the May 24, 2017 letter, BNP Paribas' letter, and I was thinking that was kind of like a loan that we were going to go after between the city and the bank, but you called it a credit to secure bonds?
Correct. They have provided, they provided back in, I think it was 2007, a letter of credit to secure bonds on behalf of the city. And as part of that whole transaction, the city leveraged at that time properties in order to be held as collateral. So we, until that is paid off, we still have to go and get their approval before doing.
So it's not that the city of Victorville doesn't have the cash on hand, right? It's procedural, that you have to secure bonds and then go that way, is that what you're saying?
Well, the bonds were secured a decade ago. It just because they are, you know, essentially the title holder of that land at this time, there's a lease, leaseback type of situation, we have to get their approval to make changes. And what they review is to make sure that we aren't impairing that property, making the value less. And in our opinion, this actually adds value to the property, so it just takes them some time to, to work through their internal processes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, Christian and everyone else that was involved with the city staff, thank you very much. This project, like you mentioned, is, like other things, there's been considered before, there's a lot of things we'd like to do in this city, but just because of funding priorities, sometimes we're not able to get there. But in 2014, I got elected, and during the campaign, I was coaching and around a lot of kids that let me know that, you know, they, they would like a place, but getting started on a project like that, there's so many moving parts. So again, a big thanks to the city staff and the city attorney dealing with that bank. The school district's a player. But this is really an example of what happens when we work together patiently, with dedication, and everyone involved just really amazed me by their commitment to this project. So specifically, I'd like to thank Mayor Garcia, Mayor Protem Cox, and Councilmember Kennedy, and anybody that supported this project. I know it's been a long time coming, because when you're a council member, the first thing you want to do before you do anything else is look at the people on your left and your right up here and say, this is a vision, here's an idea, it's just an idea, and then you turn the staff loose if we can get that consensus, and it just was slowly building momentum. And to echo one of your comments about if your city doesn't have a skate park, it is a skate park, I think what came out of all of the analysis was that this city is large enough to have multiple skate parks. So everything you've done has been amazing. This is exactly what I wanted to do in 2014, was try a test case of how to work together. And everybody here just has been outstanding, and the youth is what we're doing this for. When I came on, I really looked into what does it mean to be a council member and providing enrichment programs for the youth and elderly are high up, high up there for any elected leader. So I'll be working on some other projects too. Just again, they take so much time, but it's just, all you have to do is start. There's a senior center here in Victorville. I don't know that most people know about it, but that's something you may be hearing from me. But I just hope you know, Christian, I was very patient. I hope I did not annoy you or bother you, and I, I don't know how persistently you thought I was, but I, I tried to give you as much space and time. And it's just, it's been a real pleasure, so if there's no further comments, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Negretti, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, I have one last comment. As a follow-on, I was going to, again, work with my fellow council members on the Community Services Advisory Committee, who I forgot to thank, they did a tremendous job as well through this. It would be ideal for that skate park to have a art contest or graffiti contest with the youth here, so that they can design the art that would go on the skate park rather than having it randomly happen. So I thought that's something we could talk about more later.
Very good.
Thank you. I did get a card laid after we had already started. I will still allow this person to come up and speak. Ginger Buck. Hello, everyone. This is my first meeting at the council. I live on Pebble Beach Drive. I'm here to discuss what plans you have for the traffic flow. We already have a heavy traffic flow on Pebble Beach Drive, which parallels Hughes on the other side of the park. We have a lot of problems with speeders. On the weekends, it's congested with people taking advantage of the use of the park, and sometimes the residents who live on Pebble Beach Drive can't even back out of their driveways because of the congestion and the wild antics that go on. And I just wonder, what are the plans for controlling traffic? How is the traffic going to impact Pebble Beach Boulevard on this skate park? Has anyone thought of that?
We actually don't think that the skate park is going to add to that in a meaningful way. There are only a certain number of parking spaces that are there, they're there now. Those may be reconfigured a little bit, but we aren't anticipating a spike in vehicular traffic as a result of this.
I'm sorry, excuse me. I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, certainly as it pertains to any speeders and things like that, you know, our sheriff's captain is here and can share that information with his traffic division to, to try to curb that, especially as we add amenities to the park that are going to attract our youth, we certainly don't want that situation to continue.
The parks are already a rather dangerous place on the weekends when certain people drive into the city parking lot itself and race through the parking lot, and then they have this hydraulic thing where they drive on three wheels and one wheel's up in the sky, and they're driving around on the city park of Doris Davies, the parking lot, like that, and I'm wondering, if the hydraulic system fails, is it going to fall on somebody? And by the way, who's going to be financially liable for any accidents and deaths that occur?
So let me start with the last question. There's actually a provision in state law that exempts the city, under certain circumstances, which will follow, from liability from the use of this park by skateboarders, bicyclists, or whatever. Regarding security actually in the park and actually in that parking lot area, something that we haven't discussed tonight, but was actually approved by this council in the budget last month, is the addition of a new position, first time ever with the city of Victorville, a park ranger position, who would provide, it's not a police officer, but essentially provide more of a code enforcement and some maintenance duties, but essentially a code enforcement, keeping the peace, making sure that our parks are being used appropriately. It's a brand-new position, we don't have that person hired yet, but certainly, by the time the skate park is built, that person should be on board and doing some patrol in our parks, especially on the weekends when they're their heaviest used.
Okay, I'm still very concerned about this to the extent that I'm considering moving, because this is just getting out of hand. It's, it's already dangerous as it is, and now you're talking about bringing kids in, and I just, I'm at a loss is what to say. I'm trying to preserve my sanity and still preserve my residence, but I can't do it now because of the speeders that transverse there, so my time is up and you've heard me out.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to item D4. Discussion and possible action regarding locations of wireless communication facilities near residential, schools, churches, and other sensitive land uses. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council take no action as staff finds there is no evidence to suggest that the small-scale antenna allowed in ordinance number 2368 will be harmful to the public.
Thank you, so there's no action taken on this particular?
That's the recommendation, no action.
Item D5.
I would like to comment on that item D4, which I have the right to do so.
Provider.
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for allowing me to speak. So item D4.
I'm allowing you to speak.
For item D4, this is one of the items that I had brought in, and I think for the majority to at least bring it so we can discuss it. So I'd like to say a few words before we actually make a motion. So the RF waves can be characterized as wavelengths and a frequency. It has been known for many years that the exposure to very high levels of RF radiation can be harmful due to the ability of RF energy to rapidly heat biological tissues, which include the eyes and the testes because of the heating and the lack thereof. So there are possible effects on human health of exposure on radio frequency and microwave radio stations, and a public concern near locations of radio and television transmitters such as mobile base stations, wireless networks, and the like. So there's antennas that produce radio frequency radiation, and they do expose people near them to electromagnetic radiation. So with that, I'd like to know if we have any public notices in the parks, in the civic buildings, churches, and on school campuses, along with other communities, that show that there's that 300 ERP intensity, that they could be emitting any antennas, since there is not a consensus that there is dangers?
We don't have any notice at all. In fact, reading from the FCC Community, excuse me, Community Consumer Guide, let's see here, "Measures made near typical cellular and PCS cell sites have shown that ground level power densities are well below the exposure limits recommended by RF/microwave safety standards used by the FCC." So staff researched it further and has provided this from Federal Communications, and we don't find that they are dangerous in any way based on what the federal government has determined.
Right, and staff also put that within 300 feet, so I was wondering if the city of Victorville had already taken those measures, those measures to show that we're at least on top of the 300-foot rule, so that other people know there's antennas that do kind of emanate these radiations. Were we on top of that? It's just yes or no.
I'm not sure I even understand the question. I thought we were talking about the PCS cell sites.
Yes, we are, and if you read that, the staff also wrote within that there's 300 feet, that there should be signage or anything like that that would tell the individuals if there's a lot of, a lot of radiation. That's also in the report by staff, so I was wondering if staff had in the past considered putting any kind of signage?
So it says in the staff report, existing code regulations, this involves the public noticing of property owners within 300 feet of the subject's site.
Right, so that's what I was referring to.
Right, that's not regarding the waves. This is, just like any development project, we notify property owners within 300 feet. It doesn't have to do with any waves, it's simply because they're a nearby property owner.
Okay, so then you, the city of Victorville does notify property owners when something like this occurs? That's what my question is.
Anytime there's any development activity, such as some of the items that were in the public hearings earlier tonight.
But this is in terms of the radiation?
Anytime. Anytime there's development activity, it's not about the radiation, it's about the development activity. Anybody within 300 feet is notified. So, the property owners were notified based on them owning property within 300 feet, or they will be anytime there's development activity.
So, we do have that on site, right? We don't? We don't have anything?
There's nothing on site. Property owners are notified by mail if their property falls within 300 feet of a property that has development activity of any type.
Okay, thank you. And also, do we have plots of where we have 500 watts per antennas and then, as well as the 100 watts, since they're the lowest ones in the city? Has anyone ever grabbed stats or anything like that, so we're aware of that? Just yes or no simple would suffice?
I don't know.
Can you find out later on and maybe give me a response?
Sure, sure. I'll ask the development staff to review that question. If they have any follow-ups, I'll ask them to get with me so we can get that answered.
Right, thank you.
Okay, we move on to D5. Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreements with Civil Tech, Inc. for the design of two water capital improvement projects. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve consultant professional services provider agreements for the design of two water capital improvement program projects for a total amount of $490,168 with Civil Tech, Inc.
Got a question on D5, Brian? Or on the last, on the second page of the staff report, it asks, "At this time, staff respectfully requests an award for three separate professional service contracts to Web, Inc., in the amounts listed below." But there are two amounts listed below. On the next staff report, there were requests for three contracts, and there were three amounts. Is that just a typo? Do you want two contracts, or do you actually want three contracts totaling these two amounts?
For Web and Associates, there are three separate contracts, three separate projects.
Making up those two amounts.
Are you looking at, under the fiscal impact, the budget, or are you looking on the?
Brian, I think I have the answer, actually. Councilmember Kennedy, I think that's actually a typo on page two of the first staff report. Item D5 talks about three separate professional service contracts to Web Incorporated. Web Incorporated is actually the D6. Correct, Brian? This is awarding to, what is it? Civil Tech.
Civil Tech.
Yeah, this is actually Civil Tech. So, this is a typo.
The Civil Tech and its two contracts.
Page two should read, "Civil Tech Incorporated," and the amounts listed below for the two contracts, so.
Yes, that's right.
And these are the items you also have on the dais as the addendums. You have addendums for the contracts.
We didn't have time to read it. Can you just briefly tell us what those projects were?
Yes, I can. I can start off with the Web and Associates contracts. So, there are three different contracts, and all of them are replacing old, small-diameter water mains with new.
Now, you're talking about D6?
Nope.
Let me look at the agenda here.
That is correct. The Web contract is D6.
That's actually D6.
That's fine, let's talk about both of them.
D6, that's Web. So, all three of those contracts are replacing small diameter, old water lines with new plastic water mains.
The old ones are what, four-inch, six-inch?
They vary in size. They vary in size, they vary in material type.
In location?
And then, there is a location map that we handed out, and it shows those different areas in the city where these mains will be replaced. So, there'll be three separate contracts and three separate construction projects.
But they're all gonna be in the older parts of town, that's for sure.
Yes, they will. They'll be in the older parts of town.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Now, the other one, I did them out of order, with Civil Tech, those two projects, one of them is a new water line along the southernly extension of Amethyst Road. It will cross the Oregran Wash, it will connect into an existing Mojave Water Agency main, and then a project associated with that at the terminus of that water line will be basically a, what we call a turnout facility, that will have the equipment and the pumps to deliver that water from the MWA line to the booster station that will be constructed at Amethyst and Sycamore. So, this will be an additional supply for our water system.
Will that line be suspended across the wash?
No, it's all gonna be trenched. It'll all be a trench line. And so, those are the two Civil Tech projects.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that was item D5.
I move approval of D5.
Second.
I'd also like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
So, we have item D5 and D6, and it's gonna be pretty much the same thing for both, but we're on D5. So, currently, we're in litigation in a company for many reasons. One being that we don't always read everything, meaning today, I just came in at 5:00. I have about 50 pages. I was only able to kind of skim through it, not knowing what these contracts are. So, I'm asking, because I'm sure council has the same right to either approve or not approve, but I think it's important for each council member to read a contract just before we send approval, not just get a summary from city staff. This is a huge accountability and one of the pet peeves that I have, to read each document that I can. So, I'm gonna ask that we table this portion to the next agenda, and if this doesn't go through, then I'm gonna vote no, and I want it to reflect why I'm voting no on these two items, D5 and D6. And that's my motion.
Madam Mayor, if I could ask Mr. Gengler to come back down, just give us an idea for what impact?
Let's find out if we have a second on that motion.
Okay, sorry.
Because I don't agree with that motion. I don't want to read contracts. I'm not qualified. We have staff, we have city attorney. Me reading a contract guarantees nothing. What's critical is that we know the projects that need to be done. We've been talking about these for years, and we're finally getting them done. So, I want to see this moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Give a second?
Is there a second to Ms. Gomez's motion?
No, no, I meant, no. To?
You're going back to the first motion?
Right. Motion is to table.
No, no.
That was the second motion was to table. But I have not heard a second for that motion to table.
The first motion I heard was to table. Or was it my motion that was?
Yours was the first motion.
My motion was to approve.
And then Ms. Gomez made a motion to table. So, we would take action on that second, if there is a second to Ms. Gomez's motion. If there's no second, then we go back to the first motion to approve.
I was going with Kennedy's motion.
So, there is a motion by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Ms. Garcia to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, and let it reflect my no. We didn't have enough time. We just got these within a couple of hours. We had a meeting five, now it's six, now it's eight. None of us have read this, and to me, I need to read this before I make a vote. So, thank you so much.
So, the motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
It's a good point. We have talked before about getting information at the last minute. However, these kinds of contracts, if you take four or five contracts, it's basic material that's found in every contract regarding the entire agreement, the notices, paying prevailing wage, indemnifications, fee schedules, and on and on and on. So, the only difference you will find in these kind of contracts is where the project is to be located and the amount. And that's what's really important, and I think that was adequately explained by staff. Thank you.
These also, just for your information, these are standard form contracts that we always use on all of these transactions, and risk management, city attorney's office has gone through all of the relevant provisions regarding indemnification, risk analysis, termination provisions, et cetera.
Correct.
And in our budgeting process, we've gone through an extensive discussion of our capital projects that need to be done, the public works, the waters, the sewers. I mean, we've talked about this for the last two years.
Correct.
And just to be clear, it's not staff's desire to present contracts. At the last moment like this, certainly, we try not to. I don't know the, all the details as to why we didn't get these on the original agenda, but certainly, we endeavor and will continue to endeavor to make sure that all the materials are presented at the publishing of the agenda.
Thank you. Item D6. Consultant Professional Services Provider Agreements with Web, Inc. for the design of three water capital improvement program projects. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
Recommendation is that the Board of Directors approve consultant professional services provider agreements for the design of three water capital improvement program projects for a total amount of $632,230 with Web, Inc.
I will move approval of item D6.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, and let the minutes reflect again why my no is no. Thank you.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gomez voting no.
Now, we move on to public comments. Madam Clerk, read the statement, and then I do have some cards.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda. Per Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the decorum of the meeting. Any person or group who interferes with the conduct of a city council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.9, Penal Code Section 403.
Thank you. I do have several cards here. I will start with the first one, Daniel Polly. And after Daniel, it will be Deanne Delian.
Daniel Polly, 11418 Scotch Pine Way, Victorville, California. This is my service coin, Special Forces, Grenada. And this is unfair treatment with a violation that was taken care of sadly. Now, no one showed up to the house to even check that even the work was done, and that was code enforcement. Once the violation was given to the landlord, this should have been taken care of. Somebody should have sought it, just like they do in code enforcement on a house being built. Now, all the violations that are on here that weren't met and took over 13 days over the 30 days which it was told. Now, I handed in paperwork where I had a state inspector come out for flooring and condemn that house as being unhealthy. Now, partial of it was done, and we've had to stay in the living room for three months. Now, what happened with this paperwork when I gave it to you was thrown away. When I went to Marlene Steinbach, it was thrown away. Now, you've got Congressman Cook that's supposed to be doing stuff for veterans, which is just a show. Now, I wanted to talk with somebody about this, but it just seems like, you know, you get pushed away. Now, I've been through the veterans' programs for getting back on my feet from being overmedicated by the veterans. Now, you've got 21 soldiers a day committing suicide. Now, the issues I had with this, with breathing the ammonia, the broken-down carpets, the wooden floors that are contaminated, the air ducts, the illegal wiring, and so on. Now, something should have been done in the first place. I wasn't paid to move out. You might ask me, oh, why didn't you move out? Why don't you? Well, see, it's my government money from the VA that pays this, and this is the reason why that landlord wanted me out of 13 other people, was she knew she was gonna get a check. And the place was uninhabitable for two years of living there. And once the rains came and all the ammonia and everything, finally started figuring out. So, now I've got a bunch of medical records on which state and show personal injury. And with the city, without the code enforcement taking care of it properly, Medina, Officer Medina, which threw my paperwork away, threatened me that he'd have to kick us to the street when the landlady should have paid us, the house should have been red-tagged, and I guess that the slumlord up here, they've got it made, because they don't have to follow through with the violation.
And that's?
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Deanne, and then after Deanne, it's Raoul Rodriguez.
Will staff make contact on that?
Staff has been involved, but yeah, we can certainly reach out and make contact Just characterize it as more of a landlord-tenant dispute, not a, something that has been initiated by staff.
Hello, my name is Deanne Delian. I'm gonna speak of something very controversial, and I have a poster for it. What on earth are they doing to the USA? What's controversial about it is a book that I started reading. A very important person told me about this book. I got the book at Barnes &amp; Noble, and I started reading it. And the name of the book is called The Muslim Mafia. Has nothing to do with the religion, any more than the mafias we had in the past in our country, like the Mexican mafia, the Italian mafia, the Jewish mafia, and the Russian mafia. It's, there's nothing about the ethnic group either. This book is 292 pages long, and then after that, there's a lot of affidavits and prints. A man went in as an espionage, as a spy into the mafia, Muslim mafia. It's not a book about Muslims, any more than the book about, it's not a religious thing, any more than the other mafias I talked about. It's not about their religious beliefs. It's about the threat from the Sharia, Islam, and violent jihad propagated by a criminal class of Muslims known as the Muslim Brotherhood. And believe it or not, the ACLU, who supports one person in this group, is part of this mafia. This group of Muslim mafia has a stronghold in our Congress, inside DC groups, and it's very, very serious. This book was published in 2009. Anybody can read it. I got to read the first chapter. I've been told about a lot of it. My daughter has been reading it also. I am becoming a political activist, which I could not become when I was a teacher. And now I can voice my opinion about what's going on. And you have to do a lot of research. My daughter told me it's like a textbook. It's very interesting. There's a lot of information. And I just read the first chapter and learned a lot just by reading the first chapter. I talked to the person who knows about this book. That person told me a lot about the book, and that's why I got it. And so, from now on, I'm going to talk about the Muslim mafia. And as I just said, it has nothing to do with the religion, has nothing to do with the ethnic group of any Muslim. It is the bad part. We do have bad parts in different areas, just like we had back in, I think it was the 1920s.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raoul Rodriguez, and after Raoul John Wesley Nobles.
First of all, I'd like to start by showing my poster. It's No, No, No on SB 54. I'd like to make a motion to the city council that we plan on going to Sacramento to give them letters from different cities in Southern California that we do not approve of SB 54. And they want to make California a sanctuary state. I think it's a haven for criminals, and we need to put a stop to it. So I am making a motion that you city council members present me with a letter that you are not supporting sanctuary cities. I remember meeting with the city attorney and the city council members several months ago, and he assured me that Victorville is not a sanctuary city. So I would appreciate if you can provide a letter for me so that I can take that to Sacramento next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
The other issue that I'd like to address is, I wasn't able to speak to the city council members at the last meeting, although I waited three hours. And I couldn't speak because it was another item on the agenda. But the item that I'm speaking on is, it's Councilmember Blanca Gomez. She was at the UCR Riverside, and her name is on this flyer, which was Brown Power, is what they called it. That was just one of the names. It's Mexican and Latino State Summit. And the guest speaker was Kevin Deleon. As you know, Kevin Deleon must admit that he provided documentation for his family, which makes him a criminal. Because this was falsely, this information was improperly given to his family members. Now, I'd like to make some points. Blanca Gomez, on her resume, she calls organizations as various organizations. Now, I would like to ask Blanca Gomez if some of those organizations that she didn't list, was it La Raza and a member of LULAC, League of United Latin American Citizens? Blanca Gomez seems to promote and work with many radicals and anti-American organizations. Blanca may question, where is your heart?
It's three minutes, sir.
Okay, can I just finish real quick?
I'm sorry.
I just want to make one more comment, okay? Anyway, we have but one flag, and we have but one language. And this flag is what we all live for. This is our freedom. This is the flag for Mexico. We do not need this flag in this state or anywhere in the United States. So, that's what I think of the Mexican flag. So Blanca, you need to get with the American people. Go back to Mexico.
Okay, thank you. John Wesley, and then Agnes Givney.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to come here and see the professionalism of the city council and how well you guys work together except with one person. I wanted to, I was here last month when the big discussion about marijuana, pothouses, medicinal marijuana was discussed. And it was really amazing to see the conduct of one city council that for the first time since I've been attending these meetings, she looked up because she had a lot of peeps, a lot of friends, a lot of support in that group. But previously, the first meeting that I attended, that I pointed out how despicable it was of you to laugh in my face when I told you an illegal alien who had been previously deported murdered my only son, and you had the audacity to look in my face and laugh. I cannot forget. I cannot forget. You said it's your pet peeve to read everything. Why don't you read things what we, the American people, want? You're not representing foreigners, you're not representing illegals, you're representing American citizens. You took an oath of office to uphold the Constitution of the United States. Do just that. And if you can't, if you're going to have two personalities, then quit the city council. Because it is very apparent that these council members work very cohesively together, except for you. I want to say thank you to all of you who have to put up with this nonsense, and I can only imagine what it must be like behind closed doors. And Blanca, you're a mother too, and I told you that at the first meeting. I said to you, I hope you will never have to walk in my shoes. And very sarcastic, you looked back at me and said, thank you. I said, I didn't mean that as a compliment. This is the first time you're having eye contact. During that meeting, you wouldn't raise an eyebrow, you kept looking down and writing. How disrespectful is that? I will not tolerate it, and none of us should tolerate it. And I feel really sorry for you guys. Thank you for your time. Blanca Gomez, resign. Go away. We don't want to see you anymore.
Thank you. And after Robin, it's Jerry Joseph Laws.
My name's Robin Viston, and I'm part of the group Overpasses for America. We do the rallies on the Bear Valley Overpass. And I'm here to talk about the meeting at the University of California Riverside that was held in May. Our group went to fact-find, it was a meeting to promote brown power within our government, targeting our president and promoting people that they signify are brown power people. And we were shocked when we discovered Victorville City was being represented at that meeting. Now, we have the video of the presentation by Councilmember Gomez, and I would like everyone to watch that. Go to wethepeoplerising.com, and you can see the video. The council member, she talked about Spanish translations in Victorville, and she talked about, "Our community will continue to unite with national to meet the challenge and prepare for that political war that has been prepared." That is a quote from her presentation about the city of Victorville. And then she went on to say, this is at 1.18 in the video, she says, "I will join with each of you," and those are her brown power partners at this summit, "to wake that Mexican voting giant." She said she wants to wake the Mexican voting giant. Mexicans live in Mexico. To vote in our country, you need to be a United States citizen. Why was she talking about representing Victorville to wake that Mexican voting giant? This was very disturbing information to hear a sitting council member talk about. She went on, and again, I'm quoting her here, please watch the video, wethepeoplerising.com is where we have it posted. And we're calling it a brown power summit because that is what the organizer called it. And you can hear the organizer make that statement in the video. The Victorville councilwoman went on to ask leaders at the Brown Power Summit to unite with her in Victorville, to create this movement locally. Now, tonight, we saw her going over local issues with a fine-tooth comb. But at this event, she was promoting and uniting with national forces, very racist, brown power forces, and also the event targeted our president. So, again, I would ask the public to watch these videos. Again, we have them posted at wethepeoplerising.com. We find it very disturbing that a Victorville council member is not only representing herself outside the city, but in another county. University of California Riverside is in Riverside County. And again, our organization went to this event to fact-find, to report and observe, and we were stunned when we saw that Victorville actually had representation there promoting this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Joseph Laws.
You.
Jerry?
You, Jerry.
And then after Jerry, Richard Mathias.
I'm going to have the air conditioner on for some combat guys. You gotta turn the speakers up so we can hear you a little better. Okay. Now, I want you to get this real clear. My name is Jerry Joseph Laws. That's L-A-W-S, just like when you get a ticket, but don't want you to get no ticket, okay? Now, I ran the US Senate in 2016, I didn't do bad. I had over 53,000 votes, only got as far as San Jose, but all 58 counties voted for me. Now, I'll be running again in 2018. You can go to my website, check out my history. Now, with all the Hispanics, since we're talking about this situation tonight, oh, by the way, let's give you a compliment first. Where's that Robertson guy, might be part of my family down the tree? You're doing a good job on Luna, and Amistice, you're doing a pretty good job on that. We give you credit for that. Now, I have served with a lot of Hispanics throughout my career in the Marine Corps several times. All those who are buried in California who fought in the Civil War to keep California in the Union, and some who fought in the Revolutionary War, and every other war we've been in. We are not going to be a sanctuary state, and we're not going to be a sanctuary city. If we are, then you're going to have lots of problems on your hands. Now, we love our brothers, North and South, East and West, but we are Americans first. And all the Hispanics I talked to, they say they're American first too. Now, you can be proud of your heritage, in fact, do your work for your ancestors for your heritage, it would be very important. But this city shall not be a sanctuary city, and this shall be not a sanctuary state. And by the way, the reason I came here tonight was that I read in the paper that you were going to raise taxes, or at least you're talking about taxes on the, I forgot what, oh, Fire Department, our good old Fire Department. You know, I have a friend of mine retired from the Fire Department here, he says, "Mr. Laws, he says, "I know you've been on the radio for over 37, 40-some years. I know you have two ears and one mouth." And I said, "That's right, two ears and one mouth, you're right." "You know why you have two ears and one mouth?" And I said, "No, why?" And he's a retired fireman from here. He says, "Sure, you be quiet once in a while, let someone else talk." Now, I'll be on live talk tonight from 9:00 to 10:00 every Tuesday and Thursday nights. And I have John Hancock on one side in my family through the Phillipses. And I have some Hispanics in my family, and we'll leave you this last thought. They say, "Grandpa, are you mucho loco? A little bit mucho loco? A little bit mucho loco, porque?" "No, how come you talk so much?" Well, like I say, I've been on radio 40-some years. And I did run for city council, looks like she won against me, so that was okay. But my job is very simple, defend the Constitution, Bill of Rights, God, family, country, and that order. Now, I guess that's about it, but we appreciate you. And I know it's a little long, but remember this too, you're going to have to answer to a creator up there on the other side of the universe, the universe, in the heavens. We'll be back one of these days, and you'll have to stand before him and do what you have. But remember, last but not all...
Three minutes.
Very quickly. This is the promised land too, all the way from the top of Canada to tip of South America. And by the way, we have more bigger pyramids in Central America than they've got in Egypt. God bless.
Thank you.
Sephiroth and Ding Hau.
Thank you.
Don't forget to vote for me in 2018, because I'll be running for government if I don't win in 2018.
Richard Mathias.
I gotta go be on the radio.
Okay, next is Richard Mathias, and then Gunny Sergeant William.
Good evening, city council members. Excuse me, I'm nervous, first time I've been up here. I own a property in downtown Victorville, okay? And last three years, I've been down there, I do a lot with the homeless, I do, they don't bother me, it's not the problem. But the problem is now, lately, I've been seeing a lot more convicts getting dropped off. I mean, I am trying, the building that I have was the first Victor Press, and then it became the Earl Saloon, okay? I love the building, I think it's a piece of history, but it's getting harder and harder to protect my property on downtown Victorville. It's becoming tent city. I don't know, I'm sorry it's late and we're keeping you, but in all reality, if you guys drive down 7th Street right now, it's becoming tent city. Like, I think this is a bigger problem than all the problems that we have. Our businesses and our core is 7th Street, and I'd want to know why the trash is being dropped off from other cities. You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I know we're prevented from responding, but just for public consumption, actually, the mayor wrote a letter to the county sheriff, county supervisor, and the county. Because of that exact issue, we came to learn that, in fact, releasees from local prisons were being dropped at the transportation center. So, Mayor and I attended that meeting actually last Friday and had a very productive meeting. I haven't had a chance to summarize it for the council, but the Sheriff's Department is aware of that issue and has committed to changing the way that they transport prisoners upon their release so that they can be released to their, essentially to their city of origin, not all coming to Victorville. So, this council has been concerned about that for some time, and we are beginning to make some progress on that exact issue.
That is correct. So something is being done. Gunny Sergeant William. Jim, no last name. Sorry, Jim.
I'm Jim Granger. I have the dead celebs clothing on 6th and C Street. I want to thank you, first of all, for our new paved street and our new water lines. Unfortunately, I was out there on Friday, and I encountered more convicts being dropped off at the center. One was a 10-year bank robber who was just released into the community, and asked if I was working alone, and then asked who were the girls inside the building. And at that point, I waved down a sheriff who was already looking for these two guys because they'd harassed the people at the Greyhound bus building. And the sheriff gave them directions to the library. They proceeded to exit the opposite way. So this is still an ongoing problem. I don't know why the prisons think they can drop prisoners there. I understand they come from the county, and they come from other cities. Apple Valley and Hisparry are known to drop people in that same parking lot. So, I'm glad that you recognize it and are making some progress on it. It's appreciated, and I think it's going to help the Old Town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Gunny...
Gunny Sergeant?
Yeah, thank you.
After Eddie Stein, I'm Granger.
My name is Gunner Sergeant Crossley from the United States Marine Corps. I've been in the Marine Corps for 20 years. I'm retired now and whatnot, and I'm a former drill sergeant myself too. My only issue is that where we live at, there's no disrespect to the law enforcement, they just say whatever and whatnot, but the dropout van, they relieve all the inmates over there and whatnot near our house, and the first place they hit is the liquor store right across the street. And where we live at, they hit our neighborhood, they're like that. My daughter and I, we sit outside the front yard, and they constantly come over, and they want to drink their beer in our house, and no, 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 no. And then they ask a lot of questions, and our house almost got broken into when we were home, but our neighbors, they stopped it, it's an incident right there and whatnot. Because they thought, because my neighbors, they said they saw the van drop off the inmates, and they wandered over to my house, and they thought that there was no one home, and they tried to get into our house and whatnot. But our neighbors, they stopped it and whatnot. So I'm just wondering, is there any issue to where the inmates are released somewhere away from the neighborhood, or away from the liquor stores and whatnot too? I'll just ask if anything can be done about it. No disrespect to nobody like that. Simplify.
Thank you.
And sir, while you were out, we discussed that, we've met with the Sheriff's Department and others as well, and they're committed to making changes to some of the drop-off locations, so that it doesn't impact the way it is right now. So, it's going to take a little bit of time, at least a few months, but I'd be happy to stick around and talk with all the folks from Old Town, share a little bit more detail about that meeting.
Okay. I thank you all for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for that letter that you talked about, the meeting that you had. Appreciate that. What I'd like to know is if there's any kind of schedule right now that I could get of when those prisoners are dropped off. Am I entitled to a schedule?
I don't want to take your time. If you have more, go ahead and share, but there isn't a schedule that exists. It depends on, I don't want to speak for the Sheriff's Department, but it sort of depends on when prisoners are released, they're grouped, and then taken down as one transportation, but it's typically twice a day, is my understanding.
Yeah. So, it's twice a day, and as my husband said earlier about the two that came in, you know, and the sheriff did come, and I really appreciate that, not that sheriff, but a man that works for him, that the people that he was talking about came in, and myself and my daughter were there, they ran into the bathroom to escape the sheriffs and ask if they could stay there in the bathroom. I mean, it's just really bad people. But on another note, I did get a letter from code enforcement about the two feet of landscaping dirt that I have on the side of my commercial building, which is on an alley, and they did tear up that alley and put in some new water pipes, which I think you guys were voting on earlier. They're doing that throughout the city so that the alley next to my commercial building was torn up, and the water was replaced, which is greatly appreciated, all the hard work. But I thought it was interesting that I got a letter from code enforcement wanting me to landscape that two feet, and I would be fined if I did not, even though the, they putting the water in tore all the land up. There would be, if I had done landscaping, it would have been destroyed. And my question is that does the city of Victorville get letters about all the empty lots that you have that need to be landscaped or cleaned or, you know, we do the cleanups a couple of times a year, and I know that Mr. Cox comes and helps on that. My family and my children also help on the cleanups that are scheduled in Victorville, and we clean up all the trash that's dumped everywhere on all the empty lots around the downtown area. But is there any kind of fee assessment for the people that own that property, like the letter that I received threatening a fee for my two feet of landscaping? Is there any kind of fee for the empty lots that have the sofas and the trash and the diapers and all the things that unfortunately are dumped on that? That's my question.
Okay. Yeah, there is potentially fees associated. As an undeveloped parcel, it's handled differently, but if the city ultimately cleans that, we can go after them for the reimbursement of those costs. We also, as far as any undeveloped property around the city, not just in Old Town, code enforcement will notify that owner, and they are subject to code enforcement fines, fees, and collections in order to keep their property clean.
And how often is that?
It's, for the most part, it's on a case-by-case basis if we get a complaint. We are doing code enforcement sweeps throughout the city, but those are going to take, honestly, it's going to take several years, because we're looking at probably 40,000.
Appreciate that, too. I do see them out.
I'm sorry, your time is up, but he will be speaking with you after.
Yeah, I'll come back and talk.
Al Cotillo.
Al.
And after Al, it's Loretta Sanchez.
I've got some really bad news today. I hope it's not true that you're going to sell the golf course. If you do, you know how many lives you're going to destroy, people living on the golf course. You're going to ruin everything they've got. I hope it's not true, because if it is, you're going to have one hell of a fight in your hands, because I personally will round up everybody on that golf course, and we'll come down here. I hope it's not true. You dug your own well. You ought to be able to pay for your water.
Not true, Al. Not true. Forget it.
It's not true?
Not true.
Thank you very much. I wear it. I live right on a golf course, and I love looking out my window and seeing that beautiful golf course there. You guys got to get some celebrities up here to play golf. That's your problem. Then you'll start making money. Also, what I want to say is, I'm trying to talk. I only got three minutes. The last time I was here, I spoke. I never use foul language, and I never get out of hand, except with you. You make me, in three minutes, you're on my butt. Tonight here, you've talked to two people over three minutes. That's against the Brown Act. Okay. I walked outside the door. There's a cop out there, wants my ID. He wants to know my address. He wants to know my phone number. I guess he doesn't know about the First Amendment. I have a right to say what I want here, and everything I say is the truth, as long as I don't use foul language, and I never have. And he knows he couldn't do it by saying, "Give me your ID," so he made it believe he was going to be my friend. He says, "I'll come over to your house, see where you live, and I'll try to get more cops to patrol your area." He lied to me. I gave him all my information. He probably wanted to go check on me. Half the cops know who I am, because when that girl died out there with the airbag, the cops called me up and wanted me to go over and show them how an airbag works, because I've been a stunt man for 25 years. I've jumped from a lot higher than that into an airbag. And I told them, I explained to them how the airbag works and what the problems are, and, you know, I spent some time with the air, shooting the breeze with the guys, and they're a bunch of hell of a nice guys. And that's the second time I went down there for something. And we got the best police force up here, and I hope it remains that way. All the guys I met would never do a thing like what he did out there to me. He's invading my First Amendment rights if he wanted my ID and my phone number and where I lived. I've got a right to say what I want under the Constitution, as long as I don't use foul language. He had no right to get my ID. He did it under unbelievable circumstances that all the cops I know would never do that on this police force. Captain Sam was a very good friend of mine. I hated to see him leave, and he may be a very good captain, too. I don't know him. But I've always tried to do good for the cops, and I've always fought for them with you guys to get them what they need. And to get treated like that by a cop when I walk out the door is a bunch of crap. Thank you.
Thank you. Loretta Sanchez.
Oops. First about, it's been about three to four weeks ago, a friend of mine had shared with me, they had also saw about 20 white vans pull up in the old Walmart, old Walmart on Balsam and Bear Valley. Twenty white vans, about a bunch of people getting out of the vans with backpacks, and they were all scattered and went on their way, who knows where. I don't know if that's part of inmates being released. My friend did say that he saw on the, one of the vans said US Customs. Would that be part of the inmates? So, something to brainstorm. And also, I also help the homeless. I go out and I feed and I give out clothes downtown Hisparia area, and I know that the fairgrounds has been closed, and there are a lot of them are not able to shower. So, a lot of the homeless are getting pushed out from downtown all the way up towards, past the freeway. A lot of them are behind department stores, and it's really sad that we're just tossing aside these American citizens who are people. They are somebody. And what are we going to do for our homeless up here in the high desert? It's just really sad. A lot of them get sick, and, you know, right now, the heat is really bad. So, a group and I, we get out there, and we give water, we give food, we give clothes. We try to share as much resources as we can with them. And I know that it's been brought up before by a previous citizen here in Victorville that has asked or has presented a plan for our homeless. So, the big question is, what are we going to do for our American citizens? We're pushing them out. Are they pushing the illegals who are hanging out at the parks, Home Depot? Or do they get to hang out? And are citizens get tossed aside? Also, I just think it's a disgrace for any city to even consider SB 54. Why should illegal immigrants have any special treatment here in our country? So, again, I say no to SB 4, and I hope that you will all also be convicted if there should ever be a yes. So, again, I'm grateful to be here today, and I hope that together, as American citizens, we can unite and be strong and make our country great again. And thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have. Therefore, I will ask our city manager for a report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few things. I want to apologize. I don't, we don't normally engage in public comment. We're really not supposed to. I was just really encouraged by the meeting that we had. I think we made great progress, and I got a little overzealous. I should have saved that for this time rather than engaging, so I apologize for that. Couple of other items, some good news. I want to thank the public, those of you that voted online to try to help us fund a playground at Schmidt Park. And we were successful in being, I think, in sort of second place. We didn't win the overall grand prize of $25,000 playground. We actually got a $15,000 grant instead, so, much like a silver medalist, we're very proud about that fact still. And it'll be our third award, actually, from Kaboom. Normally, they only do one award per city, so we're doing something right there. So, thanks to everybody who voted on that. There's a cute little video, actually featured some city employees' kids, but we didn't really disclose that, kind of asking for additional playground equipment. It was a very cute video. Coming up in two weeks is actually National Night Out, August 1st. Invite you to come out and support the Police Department, Victorville Police Department, run by the Sheriff's Department, and there'll be a bunch of other vendors there. It's not quite as big as the Fall Festival yet. We hope it gets there, but it'll be a little bit challenging for our city council and some of the staff up here, because it's the same night as a council meeting. We do have some business that we have to get to, but the staff will do our best to only put items on that agenda that absolutely must come to the council on that night, because we know that you'll want to go and go to National Night Out as well. So, beyond that, August 5th is the Shred Fest at the Murph. Free document shredding, free compost and mulch giveaway, free disposal of mattresses, appliances, clothing, TVs, computers, e-waste, and cardboard from 8 until noon, or, I'm told, until the truck is full. So, I don't know exactly what that means, other than get there early. Thank you.
Council members, I will start.
Yeah, Eric Leib. First of all, I want to apologize for yelling like that at Al, but he doesn't wear hearing aids. He can't hear a thing. The only way to spike that stupid rumor was to shout at him, so I apologize. But he, I just wanted to say one thing about Eric Negretti, and he's not here, and I'm sorry about that. I will tell you, two years ago, I did not share his vision about a skate park. I thought that was a pipe dream. We had a lot more important things to do. Eric is persistent, and he's quiet, and he's effective. And his leadership on this and working with Christian and the community advisories, they found where the money was available for that purpose, got a good design, a good plan, and he won me over. So, I really want to compliment Eric Negretti for his leadership on this particular issue. I'm sure we'll see more of that kind of thing.
Thank you. Actually, we have, do we have anything that anybody wants to agendize for the next meeting?
Don't we have public comments from, I'm sorry.
No, I skipped over. Somehow, we skipped over.
Okay.
But it's actually discussion and possible action regarding items for upcoming. Have anything for the upcoming?
Yeah, I have, I have some, a couple of things. I think we should agendize possible discussion and action on who our next clerk would be. I know Carol Lee's given us her letter that she's not going to be here. She's been a wonderful person since the time I filled out my information. She's always been there for me, helping me, like nearly hold handing me, so I really appreciate her, and I'm sad to see her leave after 30 years. She has a wealth of knowledge. And with that said, we're going to have a new clerk, so I thought maybe we should have an elected position as a clerk, and so that's one of the things that I'd like to add on to the next agenda item. The second thing that I'd also like to add would be a formal policy and criteria on the election of our mayor. Our mayor is not elected at large. It's all five of us who nominate, and it's five of us who vote. Because we don't have any formal policy, and this council has shown that policies are required to follow rules and regulations in order for us to follow those guidelines, I'm going to request that we have a formal policy and a criteria that's clearly spelt out, so we know when we, if we decide who the next mayor is, how that process works. So, those are two very important things that I think should be agendized.
Well, you can put, the council members can put something on the agenda. Certainly, you can do that, but I don't, it needs a consensus to do it. Is there a consensus to do those?
No, thank you. We can't talk about hiring decisions.
No, not hiring decisions, no. Absolutely not.
The clerk is hiring decisions.
Well, I think the request is to actually go to an election for city clerk.
City clerk?
Yes. So, my, look, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I understand what you want to have the council consider is having the city clerk being elected position.
Yes.
And that would take, I believe that would take a charter change, would it not, Andre?
I believe it would, too. So, I guess we should decide first.
Well, the request is to discuss it. Why can't the manager and the attorney look into that and provide a memorandum, and then we'll determine if it's even discussable.
So, the question here is, should that be on the next agenda? Is there a consensus to put it on or not? I don't see one.
What do you want to find out, Jim?
What I want to find out?
Yeah, you're asking him for a...
Well, no, the question was, do we want to have the council involved in the city clerk election? That is a position that's appointed by the manager. It would require an ordinance change, and I think maybe a charter change.
Probably.
Doesn't do any good to discuss it until the attorney tells us if it requires a charter change or not. A charter change requires an election.
Vote to change the charter.
A vote of the public. It's a charter. That's what we had last election, and this is what it would require.
I can report back on that.
Pardon?
I can get you a report on that.
We need that information, I think, before we do anything.
And the second item, I believe, was to whether or not you wanted to adopt policies as to the election of a mayor.
Well, I'd like to speak to that before we, in regard, we have a, we've talked about policies for the longest time. I've encouraged the council to respond to the attorney, to the manager, to someone, to mark up the policy, to mark up the manual, and therefore, that is going to determine, that manual determines currently that the mayor is elected by the city council on a two-year term. If the question is, do we want to have an election for the mayor, election at large, same question goes to the attorney. Is this a charter change? If it's a matter of how this council would appoint the mayor, then that question has been waiting for the council people to respond, so the city council can discuss the policy for the council. I urge the council members to respond to that request from, everybody has a copy of their proposal. They know what it says.
I mean, the draft policies.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, because I don't know how the election of the mayor occurs, I would like to see something in writing. I don't know if it's the spirit of the law or how it functions, so I'm just asking to see something so I follow how that works. I want to be inclusive in how this process works, not just second guessing, as I've been many occasions, what are some rules, how legal procedures are done, what is it that council normally does? Many times, I'm out not knowing how it works, and when I make a mistake, I get reprimanded publicly, so I'm trying to hold back and understand how council does things. So, when I read stuff, I can go to the city manager and say, "Is this how we're doing stuff?" And now I would know. That was my intent for bringing that part, the second part, in.
What are we being asked? Can we clarify what we're being asked?
I don't see a consensus. I think, it sounds like there's two discussions going on here. One...
So, when I read stuff, I can go to the city manager and say, is this how we're doing stuff? And now I would know. That was my intent for bringing that part, the second part, in.
What are we being asked? Can we clarify what we're being asked?
I don't see a consensus. I think, it sounds like there's two discussions going on here. One, Councilmember Gomez wanted to have specific policies and/or criteria with respect to how the election of a mayor works in the city, which is right now set forth, I think, in your municipal code. And the second was, I think, Councilmember Cox wanted to have council members respond with respect, or provide comments with respect to the previously proposed policy manual that has been circulated, which does address that issue as well.
Well, we have to submit the policy manual filled out, or the changes made, to you, before we can actually decide on anything.
Yeah, I guess the question is, do you want to put the policy manual back on the agenda? It hasn't been on an agenda.
I don't know what the council wants. I've been urging for two years to adopt some policies that everybody will understand.
My understanding was that we were working on new policies, though I guess we do need it back on the agenda.
The entire, the draft policy manual, is that, or...
Yeah, needs to be brought back.
Is that what you're going to put on the agenda? Okay. That also include how the mayor is currently elected?
That is addressed in the policy manual, yes.
So, then we currently know how a mayor is elected, right? You said that's on the municipal code.
Right, it's done by majority vote of the council.
It's pretty clear that every two years after the election of the council members, that the council must reorganize, and the new mayor, new mayor pro temp is chosen by majority vote of the City Council.
Of the two other at-large cities, which would be Hisperia and Apple Valley, we're the only one that the mayor serves a two-year term. Those cities, the mayor serves one year, and they reelect every year. Atlanta, of course, directly elects their mayor. Different ways to do it. Just how we've always done it. The only criteria is you've got to be a council member. Got to get three votes, I guess. Okay, so, we'll cover that with my...
Right, my understanding is that the next, we will put on the next agenda, or soon thereafter, the policy manual again for discussion by the council.
Can I make a recommendation that it not be the next agenda? Simply because that same night is National Night Out, and I would anticipate a lengthy discussion on the policy manual. And I know that the council wants to go to National Night Out, so because of that conflict, maybe the one following.
Can we get a draft of those policies?
Absolutely.
Is it the same one that we already have?
Yes.
I just don't know that I have it. I just don't know.
We'll recirculate it.
Okay, so then, that's, or if we leave it now?
I think you're up to council member comments, unless any of the council members want to put things for consideration on the agenda.
I'm sorry.
I think you're up to council member comments now, unless there's a request by another council member to put something in, up for another agenda item. So, you're up to E4.
Yeah, I'm moving on to E4. Reports from council members, five-minute time limit. Did you have some?
So, yesterday, this is my, this is my comment. So, yesterday, I was over in Hisperia Road. A family of seven had encountered something that was not favorable to them, and the police was called. Their concern was that the officer was laughing. And so, I tried to say, maybe the officer was nervous, you don't understand, something could have been happening. But they said, no, we videotaped the officer. The officer was very rude, and he continued to laugh, despite the fact we said, please do not laugh at what our concerns are, we're trying to let you know what's going on. So, I told the family that I would bring that to council, and ask, what are the procedures that the city encounters with police officers to make sure that we're always aware that these things are very serious? When you encounter a person and you perceive to be laughing, it doesn't build good rapport and trust. These people go out and tell others, and continue to tell others, and it gives law enforcement a bad name. And for the city of Victorville, I don't think that's the case. I think that there's a lot of miscommunication. I talked to the watch commander yesterday. He'd assured me that he would listen to the audio. And so, I just want to make sure that the audience realizes that it's very hard to be a police officer, and we understand that they have a lot on their back. But at the same time, I also want to bring it to the attention of the chief, to let us know, what is it that you do, whether it's a yearly workshop, or what is it that happens, so that we can assure the public that it's not that, there is no training, there could have been something that was occurring. And I want to always make sure that we're there for both police officers and our audience, just making sure we're bridging the gap and bringing trust. If not, that's the least that we can bring to our community members.
So, if I, if I might, I believe this happened on Sunday, not yesterday, right? Okay.
You're right. I was with, six to nine, I was with you guys, so yes, you're right.
So, I spent the better part of yesterday, I talked to the deputy, I listened to his belt recorder, I listened to phone calls made. I went to the atrium plaza, nobody was there. I went back today, and I spoke with Maria Esther, one of the reporting parties there. And I don't want to debate whether the laughing was intended to be a lack of concern or not. I think there's a misunderstanding of what happened out there. As it is in a lot of these report calls, I think the reporting parties were upset, number one, because it took the deputy an hour to get there. He was there in fifteen minutes and got broke for a fire at Casabella Apartments. So, when he gets back, there's a frustration that it took him a while to get there. And when he gets the initial information on the call, he goes about what happened. He goes back to his car to contact the manager of the business to find out how much money the broken window was going to cost, and whether the owner of the business wants to be a victim. It's perceived by the reporting parties that he's not interested in the call because he's sitting in his car. Well, he's actually doing his job, calling people to find out if this is a felony or a misdemeanor. So, there's a lot of things that the deputy is doing to make sure that this person is going to jail. And maybe he chuckled because he felt these folks believed he wasn't doing his job when he had this person arrested in his backseat, and had every intention in taking this person to the jail. So, maybe a little bit, a little bit of misunderstanding on that. And then to the, to the training that we give these people, our deputies, there's a lot of training that goes in, into talking to the public, tactical communication. There's Learning Domain 3, which Police Officer Standings and Training puts forth, that these guys go through at the academy when they, when they're, when they're talking to people. And I tell you, when, in our briefings, this is a conversation we have all the time. And I tell these guys, a lot of times, it's not what you say, it's how you say it. So, getting that point across means a lot, and I'm not going to disagree that something did happen out there. He dug himself a hole, maybe in what he did, accidentally. Took him a while to dig back out, but I listened to the tapes, he did a good job, was pretty professional on there. I listened to the phone calls, and the fact that these come up impress upon me that we need to continue our talks in our briefings, and make sure that when we have our trimester training, that we include those perishable skills, and I believe post is, that's what Police Officer Standards and Training call those are perishable skills, that we continue to talk about the importance of communication.
Anyone else? This may transition.